Good evening. Notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of Caldwell, Burleson County, Texas will convene in a regular meeting at the City Council Chambers, 107 South Hill Street, Caldwell, Texas. Regular meeting place thereof at 5:30 PM, August 20th. Please stand for the indication of pleasantries that I have in my back.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and for your blessings. We just thank you that we live in this great country, the United States of America. We pray blessings on the, uh, just the government that is in control, the Lord, all the way down to the city here. We pray that you give us wisdom and very great discernment as we make decisions for the citizens of Caldwell. Lord, that what we do is pleasing and honoring to you. Father, we're mindful of the military and the first responders that protect us and keep us safe and are there for when we need them, and we ask your blessings on them and their families. And Father, may all that we do bring glory and honor to you in the way we speak, the way we think, and the way we act. It's in Jesus's name we pray.
Amen.
Pledge to the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Texas flag.
Honor to the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Another hospital house. This makes me happy because that means you are concerned about the activities and happenings of Caldwell, Texas. So consent agenda items. Do we have a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda, which consists of approval of minutes, ordinance number 082024A, and the library policy amendments?
Seven minutes.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor of approving the consent agenda items, raise your right hand. All in favor, motion passes. Next, notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of Caldwell, Burleson County, Texas, will convene in a public hearing on the 2024 property tax rate and the proposed city budget for the fiscal year October 1, 2024 through September 30, 2025.
So, just to pick off the public hearing, I'll just give you a quick summary of the tax rate and the budget for this year. So the budget for this year, we're looking at a little over 21 million in expenditures, about 19 million in revenues. We have several large projects on the books that a lot of that's going to come out of fund balance. The largest one we'll have, if it makes it into this fiscal year, would be a new substation. Um, you know, and we've got that, we've got that in the budget of 1.6. But even if we don't get all the substation done, we will probably be getting line build out and the lot, and things that we need to do no matter what, to do some, some line upgrades. So that's why you see the, the difference in the expenditures and, and revenues. We are keeping the tax rate the same as we have for, I believe, the last, at least six years. So that will stay at 137957. Uh, that will generate an additional, about $150,000 in revenue just from increased valuation on, on the tax rolls. We have a couple of changes to rates, and, and the rates won't come today, they'll come at the next meeting. But, uh, the rate increases you'll see are on sanitation, both residential and commercial, and then our wastewater rates as well. Back in our, during our workshop, I presented to the council, did a lot of research, and even with, with our, especially on the sanitation side, the increase you're looking at on the residential side is about $4.81. And even with that increase, we are still below anybody else in that area. I mean, you're looking at fast-growing cities like Kelvin, Minnesota, Smithville. I mean, I, I kinda, I surveyed everyone around here, and even at the new rate, which the new rate's 28 for a month, you know, we're, we're still below everybody else by two or three dollars a month. But with that, that affords the opportunity to have a dedicated brush and bulky route. So you saw our, our new brush truck sitting out there. So now it's not going to be a guessing game of when we'll get by to pick up your brush and bulky. It's going to be once a week. The dedicated day for, that go, we'll go, I'm not sure, let's say if your trash day is Wednesday, maybe your dedicated day is Monday. We haven't confirmed all those details. That'll start in October, but, you know, that, that does afford us the opportunity to have that, and then have somebody that's going to do that route in the back. And that, that way, we're not pulling away from, nor will we have to pull somebody from streets, or it's, it's long and drawn-out process, and this will keep us looking nice and clean. On the wastewater side, in years previous, uh, just to kind of touch on that rate increase, which is approximately four, it is 488 per residential. Um, in the past several years, we borrowed money from somewhere else just to keep that fund afloat. And I, I don't really care for that practice, so this puts us kind of on line and in a lot better footing to, to accomplish some of our long-term goals and capital improvements. And just keeping up with operations, everything's gotten a lot more expensive. Uh, there's, there's commercial increases on that side, too, just to kind of keep everything up, even, even playing for you. But, uh, that's basically what the budget is built around. So again, just touching on, again, the dedicated brush route. We've talked about, on the sanitation side, we didn't talk about this, but we're having, with all the growth that we're having, we're having to add an extra day for our, our actual residential routes. We are at the point where it's, it's kind of borderline, but as we know, we're picking up, you know, 130 new homes, more out, we're, airway at farms, we're still hearing about other developments, so we'll be prepared for that. And at council's request, during the workshop, we have a budget in the, the Praxial machine also. Having the dedicated brush route, too, also helps because it frees up a couple of people that are doing it now, which we can use to help man that Praxial machine. So, you know, all those, that, that will come back in front of y'all once we nail down the specs that we want to go with on the machine. But, uh, really excited about the budget here. Looks, looks good for us as long as council is okay with the, the increases and keeping the tax rate where it is. So I'll answer any specific questions that y'all have. Is it, somebody out here? It is a public hearing?
Any comments? Concerns? Okay, we're good. Okay, on to regular agenda items. Approval of the city budget for this for year October 1, 2024 to September 30, 2025. And like Camden said, we sat in a hours-long workshop to discuss all of this, and Camden worked really, really hard to get us where we are. So, um, it's been well thought out. It wasn't just something done on the fly. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
I have a second.
All in favor of approving the city budget for fiscal year October 1, 2024 to September 30, 2025, raise your right hand. All in favor, motion passes. Next, approval on ordinance number 082024B, setting the 2024 property tax rate. Again, hasn't been raised in six years. Click the motion to accept.
I'll make a motion next.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor of approving ordinance number 082024B, setting the 2024 property tax rate, raise your right hand. All in favor, motion passes. Next, award bid to lowest bidder for the 2021 GLO Community Development Block Grant mitigation for roadway and drainage improvements.
Camden said, promised he wouldn't steal my thunder this time, so he's letting me present everything. So, I'm with, with the Strand Associates, the engineer, for, for this project. This is for the GLO roadway and drainage project. Uh, next item will be for the sewer, but both those, those bids were opened back on August 6th. Had good turnout on both, both, uh, projects, four bidders for each. Um, you should have copies of, of the bid tabulation. Uh, this is for improvements to mainly, it's, it's improvements all along Cleb Road, drainage and, and street improvements, as well as some drainage improvements on Harvey Street that was identified during the GLO, um, application period. Um, so bids were submitted back on the 6th. Larry Young paving at Bryant was the, the low bidder with a base bid of, of 1.8 million dollars. Um, and then an alternate bid of 389,000, for a total of 2,195,000 dollars. Um, as far as the GLO funds, um, total construction funds that were available is about 4.1 million. Um, those were divided up into both sewer and road and drainage, uh, activities. They can move around, and we had a discussion with the GLOs, uh, today actually, uh, about what they are going to need to, to move some of those monies around, just to make sure, uh, because the roadway came in a little more than we expected, and the sewer came in a lot, a lot less than we'd expected. So overall, um, with both, both projects awarding all alternates, uh, the city's still going to be left with about 157,000 dollars in that construction budget, which is a good thing to have. You never know what's going to happen during construction. There, there may be some change orders if, if we get towards the middle to the end of the project, uh, we may be able to add some, a few things to it, uh, within, within the confines of GLO. Uh, so I'm here to answer any questions you have on, on this, and then we'll go on to the, the sewer project as well, if you have a comment about that.
This is a long time coming, so I think we're talking about.
Yeah, unfortunately, this GLO process has, has taken many years. It's, it's good to finally have these under construction.
GLO, General Land Office, right?
These are mitigation funds from Hurricane Harvey.
Harvey Street is south Harvey?
North.
North Harvey.
Between Bear and Fawn?
North Harvey, between Fawn.
Oh, for the drainage improvements.
Yes.
It's right, as Bear Street comes.
Yes.
Bracing down from the elementary school.
Yes.
The, the drainage improvements will primarily be right there as a tease into Harvey Street.
Is it the concrete channel there today?
Okay.
Any suggestion, please, right there?
Yes. I was thinking when you said Cleb, because doesn't Harvey go all the way, that, okay, I was just thinking of that way. Okay.
And to confuse you even more, when we get to the sewer side, we've got the Harvey Street lift station, which is.
So, so as we did this, you'll see that we have the alternate bid on this, and then we had about six alternate bids on the sewer side. And we broke it down because we weren't sure where the, the estimates were going to come in at, or the bids were going to come in at. So we wanted to make sure that we could get our base bid in for sure. And then we added all these alternate projects, so then we could pick amongst those. This one has one, and the next one has a bunch, but that's why it's deemed an alternate on there.
On Cleb Street, so that starts from 36, does Cleb improvements cross Harvey and go all the way, all the way down? Okay, let's ask about that. Someone didn't know if it stopped at Harvey, if it crosses and goes all the way back.
Much, much needed improvement.
Okay. Okay, do you have a motion to award for this first? Okay, do we have a motion to award to lowest bidder, which is Larry Young paving, for the roadway and drainage improvements?
I'll make a motion and we award Larry Young.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, a motion to award the bid to Larry Young for the General Land Office Community Development Block Grant for roadway and drainage improvements, raise your right hand.
Is that the base bid, any alternatives? Yes.
Okay, all in favor, motion passes. Next, award bid to lowest bidder for the 2021 General Land Office Community Development Block Grant mitigation for sanitary sewer and lift station improvements.
And so we also, the same day on August 6th, we opened bids, uh, for, for this project as well. This includes the replacement of the lift station on Harvey Street near the railroad tracks, as, as well as various sanitary sewer gravity line replacement, uh, kind of all over town. Uh, like Camden mentioned, we, we divided this up into a base bid that included the lift station and some of that, uh, uh, gravity line replacement, and then created six alternate bids. And this is mainly due, as, as you mentioned, to, to try to utilize all the, the funds, uh, construction prices being what they are. You never know until bid day exactly where everything's going to fall. Uh, and much like the prices are right, we want to try to get to the number without going over. Um, so that's why this was done. Elliott Construction, uh, who's done, uh, several projects here in, in Caldwell, as well as other cities that we work with, was the low bidder. Uh, with the base bid and all six alternates, their bid was 1.67 million. Um, so again, with, with the funds that, that the GLO, um, have for the city for construction, um, taking both the roadway project and the sewer project, awarding all alternates, um, there's still about 157,000 dollars left, uh, in that budget. And, and there's going to be some, some paperwork and some other things to shift a little bit of the, those monies around from the roadway, or from the sewer to the roadway, uh, that, that'll get taken care of during, uh, this process of, of executing contracts and getting into construction.
When is the estimated start of these projects?
So, um, both projects get awarded tonight. I, I typically allow a month, month and a half more likely, uh, for contract execution. Uh, both these contractors have to get their bonds and insurance and everything in place, and that, that does usually take some time. Um, so I, I'm, I'm looking at probably end of September, early October, um, to have a pre-construction meeting on both of these projects and, and breaking ground soon after.
I was just trying to see if it was going to be before winter time sets in and rain season between end of December and.
As soon as they break ground, it's going to start raining.
Okay. Okay. Touche.
So on this, I guess I should have done this before. Um, as far as a staff recommendation, we recommend award Elliott Construction the base bid and all six alternates.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, do the base bid and the six alternates.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor of awarding the bid to Elliott Construction and six alternates for the sanitary sewer and lift station improvements, please raise your right hand. All in favor, motion passes. Next, granting the city administrator authority to enter into a contract agreement between the City of Caldwell and the Brazos Valley Council of Governments for Senior Citizen, Senior Center Operations for Older Americans Act Program for fiscal year 2024 through 2026.
So during the last meeting we had, um, we had talked about during that workshop, the senior center and some of those topics of concern that y'all have, uh, been aware of from citizens. And so we reached out to PB COG, and the contract will not actually be ready until, uh, September. So instead of waiting to bring it back with the contract, we were wanting to go ahead and start all the paperwork now because it has to be filed before August 30th with PB COG, and we have to do an application and go through all of the logistics. And so, uh, we would bring back the contract at a later date, but this way Camden could just sign that contract whenever it's ready to be signed. Um, so that means we would take operations over of the senior center starting October, um, and then proceeding for a two-year period, and then we would, after we knew that contract to begin, if we wanted to keep operations going. Um, obviously, right now, the city has no responsibility to the operations of the senior center. It's, uh, individual and basically a nonprofit that's running it. Um, so we just provide the facility. Um, so this would actually bring it under city custody, and then we would be able to allocate , uh, programming and staff members to actually be there on site, be there as, I guess, a person for them to ask questions or, you know, if they need help with anything. Um, but then also to provide the staff support that's needed to maintain the grant funding from PB COG, so submitting receipts and invoices back to PB COG for the grant funding that's, uh, maintained throughout the process.
That'll manage, yes, base. When is it start?
Uh, it'll start October 1st.
We're good? Do we have a motion to grant the city administrator authority?
Motion.
All in favor of granting the city administrator authority to enter into a contract agreement between the City of Caldwell and COG for senior center operations for 2024, 2026? Raise your right hand. All in favor, motion passes.
I was just going to say, we're, we're grateful for the volunteers that have helped keep that together for many years, but hopefully with the help that cities have and just other resources that, that we can help them out and continue to do better and improve programming and things of that sort. Thank y'all.
Okay, next, side setback variance request by Carolyn Revilla to construct her carport at 305 North Temple.
So Mr. Revilla, Revilla, sorry, Revilla at 305 North Temple Street, uh, is requesting a variance for a carport. Um, this is the property location. This is the before and after, what she's made improvements to on the property. Um, so she has done quite a substantial amount of work to, uh, improve the overall, uh, curb appeal. Um, the request is going to be for a three-foot side setback, so the code requirement is seven and a half foot for, uh, the side setback, um, all of the other setbacks she needs. And this is a site plan of the, uh, property, and then on that far right side, um, is where the carport will be placed with that three-foot, um, offset from the property line. Uh, this is another, I guess, elevation drawing that she provided, so carport and then three-foot for the fence. And then this is a rendering that she provided as well. Props to her for doing this, because this was above and beyond what we've ever really had. So I was highly impressed. I was showing.
It's beautiful.
It was great.
And your yard is so green.
Overall, uh, she has submitted an application for building permit. Shelby and her have talked about construction requirements and things like that, but she just needs the variance request in order to proceed with the construction.
There's already wooden fence there, right?
Correct. So, any questions?
Do we have a motion to approve the setback variance request?
So, Liz.
Second?
Second.
All in favor of approving the side setback variance request, raise your right hand. Motion passes. Let's keep rolling. Um, update on the drainage analysis report for Temple Street.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, this kind of expands on the original, uh, drainage study that was done, uh, further up in the industrial park. It adds a detention pond, and that project is still waiting funding by the GLO, so that project is, is coming. Um, I think for, I think we'll skip to the, if you don't mind, skip to the last page, and then we can, we'll back in if the questions are necessary from there. Uh, what we're showing on the last page here are different conditions. So top left is the existing condition, and this, this is the flooding area, uh, between, um, Temple, 6th Street, and, or what would be 6th Street and Banks. Um, 21 is just to the, just the left of, of the area. Uh, so with the proposed detention pond that, again, will be, is anticipated to be constructed at some point, or if the funding becomes available, um, the condition is anticipated to go, or the modeling shows a condition will go from what the top left shows to the top right. You can see, uh, a lot of the red is gone, um, a lot of the yellow, basically meaning that the, the ponding depths are less. So there's less, less water, less deep water running across there. Um, upstream, along with the, the General Land Office and GLO project, there's a, there will be an alternative to replace a box culvert. Um, and so that's what you see in the bottom left. That may or may not happen depending on the funding that's available. Um, but probably the biggest thing is that the, uh, it was, it became pretty obvious that the existing 60-inch culvert pipe that is running along, uh, Temple is, is more or less a bottleneck. So more water is getting there than it can handle, and therefore, um, prior to those, uh, two pads being constructed, water will just flow over the site. So the recommendation is to simply remove the, remove the existing culvert that's there. Um, make some modifications to the existing concrete structure by removing the top and two of the sides, so kind of create a, an L shape there for the water to change direction and go down the 6th Street, what will be the 6th Street right away. And, um, that, if, the modeling shows that pretty much alleviates all of the, all the flooding across the actual property. Also prepared some cost opinions. Uh, these assume that a contractor performs the work. Um, so depending on, on the direction that's done, it, it may be some opportunities to lessen some of these costs. Uh, the, the first cost opinion, basically 300 feet of ditch that would be regraded, modify the structure, take out the existing culvert pipe. Um, second alternative, with concrete line in the bottom part of that, some beautiful line in the bottom, three feet up on the sides, and then grading on that. And the third alternative is basically a fully lined concrete ditch, um, from 21st Street all the way to 6th Street, ditch, 6th Street right away.
When you say fully lined, what, what are you saying?
Concrete line.
I, I guess, but to.
So concrete along the bottom and then up a little bit on the sides.
Okay, so a flat, fat bottom ditch with sides, okay.
Yeah, there's, there's not a lot of existing right away there between the street and the city's right away, and that ditch is very deep. So, um, yeah, the thought was to potentially kind of create line on the bottom, vertical walls, three feet up, and then gives the ability to grade it out after that, or, or just take the concrete all the way up. That's an option as well.
Yeah, I was going to say, what's going to hold the street?
Well, that's the issue. We've got to do something to stabilize it because we're having roadbed erosion, and, you know, we, we had some sidewalk that we were able to place there. And, you know, we, we had some sidewalk that we were able to place there because with that culvert, you kind of have a whirlwind effect right there. So we've temporarily done that. That's not a long-term solution, especially if we go and we remove this culvert, rebuild that ditch. We, we need something to solidify that and make sure we don't lose it to erosion.
Yeah, I was, I was just saying, that's pretty, if even you go up three foot, you already got a sixty-inch pipe there and that's not even level with the road.
Right.
So what's gonna hold the existing road of Temple if we don't go all the way up?
Yeah, and there may be a compromise. We're in that exact location, go all the way up and then new locations we don't. Um, that could be trued out more during, uh, when we come designing. But yes, removing that culvert would greatly reduce the swirling right there. Um, that's really eating away at the side of that bank. That curve, that curve may fall at some point.
As I, I mentioned earlier, the city's already cleared that from Temple to behind No Act Field. So if we do get rain, there's no blockage anymore. So we get that out of there and where, where do we stand on that?
Where do we stand on getting that?
Pipe out.
Well, we've gotten some, you know, Thomas, if you wanna speak to that, we've gotten a local quote, just doing the pipe and does that include re- regrading?
No, no, of course they'll, they'll reshape it, but that was, any, I, Larry gave me a bit on how to removing the, the pipe, kind of shaping the depth ditch, then we get through the box culvert that's taking the top off and the one side, leaving the L like we had discussed. So I believe it was like, what was it, Camden, fourteen?
Five, something like that.
Fourteen, fifteen thousand, fourteen something. Very reasonable, I thought.
But I think when we do that though, we, 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 we've gotta start looking a little bit more long-term. I always, uh, I wanna make sure we don't have erosion problems and lose that road there.
Well, that's what I'm saying, we, you, are we gonna approve?
There's nothing on the agenda to approve. This is for discussion.
Okay, so...
Just so we can provide this update. Now, if y'all instruct me to, to go look at any of these options and bring back a quote or, you know, we can bring it back. If it's a, if it's under fifty thousand dollars, we can just do it.
Do we?
But I, you know, if you wanna give some direction or if you'd rather see theirs, I'm open to that.
And, and just to reiterate, until that, until that detention basin is constructed upstream, there still likely will be flooding across those properties. It's, until that, until that basin is there to kind of hold everything back and that's the top right.
Do we have any idea? I mean, we've talked about for so long, I, it's almost, it's longer than clever almost, things like.
It, it does. We, yeah, we, it seems so that the, the GLO has been going cog by cog. They started with HAC cog and then with a different one and then, uh, it seems like they're, they're getting very close on BD cog. Um, I've got a couple of other GLO projects that are getting really close to, to starting or the city's getting their notice of eligibility. Uh, I will say though, once they get the notice of eligibility, it has taken the GLO six to nine months to actually get a contract with the city started and executed. Um, cities do with this round of funding, cities do have the option of fronting a design and grant administration costs, um, and getting reimbursed for those once the contract is executed. But really it saves you that six to nine months where I've got a project that's completely designed, ready to go and the city's still waiting on a contract with the general land office, so.
But I, I thought we couldn't even start.
After the notice of eligibility. There would be a letter that they send out, um, it's NOE, it's called NOE. And they'll send it out and they've been, the grant administrators have confirmed that they've been very vocal that yes, you can start once you get this letter.
Okay.
Basically their blessing of the project, yes, for figuring this.
So timeline for engineering on this, the detention pond?
Uh, honestly, probably a few months. It would be another situation where it would be sitting ready to go before, likely before. They keep to, they keep telling us that, yeah, we're getting better at getting these contracts out, but I haven't seen it yet, so.
Just, just to be clear, if, if, should we take the pipe out? We do, that we knock down the wall of the top and everything else? And within two months, we can start on the detention pond? No?
No, no.
No.
That, the, the wild card or the unknown is the notice of eligibility letter that the GLO sent the city. And then the city also then has to be able and willing to upfront pay the engineering and grant administration costs until that contract is executed.
But we get the money back?
Correct.
So, I mean, wouldn't that be a, better, be our benefit to get it done, but fronting the cost?
As soon as we get that notice of eligibility letter, then, then I don't have any issue moving forward.
Okay.
But we were instructed, anything we do before then was not reimbursed.
Yeah. Well, I, I was just asking you because you, you, you're the one that knows where the money is and I, I just wanted to make sure that...
No, I think this is just like the other projects that we've been waiting incredibly long time for and, you know, we'd love to jump on it now, which is the hurdles that we have to jump to get there.
But with this finding, you do the detention pond, that basically stops the building of the houses. Is that correct? Am I jumping in a hornet's net? I'm just trying to get a clarification of why we did this survey. But, you know, it, it goes with north and to the south of it and do, what is the, that's why we did this survey?
We did, yeah, we, we did this survey to figure out kind of the rest of this, right?
Mm-hmm.
We, we continued our study because even with that detention pond, we were still seeing conditions that were kind of out of the ditch at some point, right? So we, we still were gonna have issues.
Right, yeah, well, the top left, it, that's, that's what, it's gonna come out of the ditch still even with the detention pond.
So it, it was never in the, the scope of work for drainage engineering? We, we can't say whether or not having those, those two slabs there are gonna flood the house immediately because of it. I mean, that, that's not the scope of work that they, they had. This is in order to make that drainage flow better and to hopefully ensure that we have no issue going forward.
But a couple things, uh, the, the first thing is that culvert needs to come out correctly, recommendation.
And it would be hydrolically beneficial if the culvert came out, then the top, make it turn to an L to the top off. Yeah, it seems like there's an opportunity to leave most of what's there.
Yeah, and then, uh, yeah, go ahead and, you know, possibly fix that temple part of it? And then access for the property to, for the two houses, right? What's, what's the, there's a, there's not a big culvert.
It would, it would likely need to be some sort of box culvert, uh, the neighbors', um, existing driveway on some sort of bridge. But a box culvert would probably be a, a safer, uh, more reliable alternative. And we, we, we can call up the size of whatever that size of box culvert is.
Well, that's gonna be an awful large one in this, because you already got a sixty-inch and of course, uh, I'm sure with it being a box, we could get wider.
Right, right.
But at the same token, we...
It may be a five by four or five by five box, maybe something that size, yeah, or something even larger.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The direction that y'all would have staff go with this, what, what would y'all like for us to bring back?
I think we would possibly let get some bids, you know, off this company. You had mentioned about, um, maybe some of the numbers that you came up with, but as far as having, and having a contractor with that, it might be a little bit more costly.
I would, yeah, I would say we think so, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, we've got the, basically the, the first alternative there, the Temple Street drainage improvement, just a grading only, removing that pipe. We have a bid on that from any, uh, you know, I think what we could bring back and we're, we're working on getting one, just, just like the, the other two alternative is, you know, hey, let's put concrete on the bottom and then three feet up and then go ahead and, and do the whole project. Happy to bring that back whenever we get those numbers.
Wouldn't that be beneficial to us at, at this time to go ahead and shore up the road with, with the, the wall?
We, we're ready to do something.
Yeah, I mean...
And as we, but where, where we had the roadbed erosion was where you had that swirling effect. So at a bare minimum, we have to build that wall back with whatever would be suggested by engineering. But, and then you wouldn't have the swirling effect, so it would continue to chew away at it.
Once you remove the pipe, the swirling will occur basically at that corner where you have the box culvert that was there. And so you wouldn't have as big of a, I mean, it's not gonna anywhere at the concrete quickly.
Well, what I'm concerned about is that, I'm, I'm taking too much time maybe, but the, the, the culverts that there right now, the sixty-inch, it goes down. If, if we're gonna take that out, what holds the six, the, the six-foot wall that's against the street, if water's coming down that flume, even if you just graded it? If we don't put cement back in there, water coming off the road's gonna go down and it's gonna wash off the sides.
There's, there's curb there. It's the water we're gonna have to hop the curb.
Okay.
Um, and then there's an inlet close to where it makes the turn, so a little overflow unless there's a, if there's a lot of water, yes, it's gonna probably go over the curb.
But I, I just, I, all I can see is slipping. Cause even if you've got a curb and, and behind it is this, I just, while we're there, if we went, it's three foot and we only need to put three foot for, uh, the length of that pipe where it is now to, to support it. I mean, it would be cheaper then than having to come back and have to re-support it. But, but I'm not an engineer, so.
And is any of this, part of this pro, this project that we're talking about, can that be put into that GLO or is that, the GLO just straight detention?
Oh, wait, I don't want to do your thing. Uh, so the, the GLO project was scoped, uh, oh, two years ago. Uh, and there's really no, you can't add and subtract. I mean, it, it changes census blocks, potentially it changes beneficiaries. And then you get restore and then, you know, get the funding and it's, it's just a rabbit hole that it's not, not advisable to go down.
Okay.
All right, if we have a hundred and fifty-seven thousand from the other GLO, you can't use it, okay?
Same thing, no, unfortunately, yeah.
Okay, so that money goes, whatever you spend, it goes back to the government?
If you don't spend it.
If you don't use it.
Yeah, if you don't spend it.
Yeah.
But that only on that job. Okay.
So, let me, how about I bring, uh, these three options? Hopefully in the next meeting, we can decide how we wanna move forward. So we'll take these and we'll kind of update the, the estimates either through any of our...
We'll also have to put those little boxes in there for entrances to vote them to. That wasn't included in any of the... And typically to get us to specific size.
Yeah, we can get to the size. Typically, the rubber's developed in the property with, with culvert pipe in, in this case, box culvert. But I understand that this is a very large box culvert, so it'll be a different situation. Can we bring it back?
I have a question.
Yeah.
You don't mind? So what, are you saying at the next one, you're gonna figure out the cost of the three, whether it's gonna be to line it all the way around? But, but right now it is gonna be open?
We're gonna, I think what we need to do is, is figure out, you know, the whole scope of this project, whether we're, you know, I don't wanna just rip that culvert out and have that sitting wide open. I would prefer to do it as a whole project. So at the next meeting, hopefully I come back with these three alternatives and the council can make a decision on what direction they wanna go with that. So that could be simply, hey, we, we've got the funds to pull that culvert and kind of rebuild that, that drainage bed. Or it could be the three-foot of concrete up and, or the whole thing.
And then the city's gonna pay for the culvert, the, the cement culvert that's gonna go in there?
For the new home?
So currently we have, like, we have the bridge, the one that has to...
Correct.
So we are responsible for putting that bridge in. So that's why I'm asking, so is the city willing to pay for that?
I think we anticipated the bridge to stay.
Yeah, no, no, she's asking for the new housing.
Right, oh, okay.
Yeah, and, and as Jared mentioned, normally the developer would be responsible for that cost.
I'm, I'm sorry?
I said normally the developer would be responsible for that cost.
Okay, but is that...
We haven't, yeah, we haven't had any discussions. City staff has not had any discussions about paying for that.
And we, we're not even sure what size that would actually be. It, it would be, you know, it'd be pretty substantial all that you're kind of implying.
I have a question. On the, the cement or whatever you're planning, that won't go from sixth to banks? That's only that strip along Temple Street?
At this time, yes. The, the really, and, and I know it's hard to keep that cleaned out and, you know, it, it, it doesn't look great and, and we can certainly do a better job to try to keep that clean, but the, there's a, a functional purpose to, you know, along Temple Street. So it actually keeps that roadbed up underneath. If you've seen it, it starts to erode that out and then we lose the road. We, you can see that the curves are already falling a little bit. So that would be the main reason that we do that for this particular job.
Okay.
I know there's been discussions among some of the council members, just to really streamlining our drainage and making it look better. It just, it all comes at a pretty large cost.
So I have one last question. So I'm currently in the process of replacing the boards on my bridge. So should I wait on some of that if you're going to pave the flooring? Because are they gonna need to open it back up to calling it or?
They would replace anything they messed up.
There's, there's sufficient space underneath there. I probably think that if they were, if they could do it underneath.
Okay. Cause I didn't wanna do it all and then have it, I can wait. I don't have a problem waiting. But I just wanna make sure we're not doing double work there.
Yeah, but that would be more of a question that came to, to answer on the timing or yours or council. I, I don't have any idea about that.
I'm willing to wait, trust me. So I just wanna make sure. But I coordinate that now.
How about wait for now, we'll stay in contact.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next, department and community reports. On the code enforcement report, Benji, when it says observed overgrown grass, is that just city employees riding around?
That's usually me.
Usually during the city, like, okay, got it. And then phone calls, received a complaint that someone calling it in.
Yes.
And then I noticed you had a few citizen problem reports. So that's citizens that see it and...
That's how I differentiate between...
Got it. Saw quite a bit of that.
Also, but I see a lot of reopening cases and you got seven on here. We're not babysitters. I, is there any way we can put, start finding these people?
We're, we're trying to in, implement that. We're trying to get that done, yeah, so where we can do something, but, but we don't usually do it right off the bat. I guess there's, there's some, you know, that are reopened, that, that's showing that it was closed, you know, that they did do what, if we sent them a previous letter or call or whatever, they did do it. And then it over, got overgrown again or whatever the problem was, had to start all over, do it again. Those are those, okay? And then the updated ones are the ones that just hadn't been done yet, that were just having to be repeated. So those are the ones we usually start working with, with trying to do citations and stuff.
Well, you know, because there's no sense of us having to babysit. If, if you, you hit people in the pocketbook, they'd probably get it done. And I, 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 you know, Janet, the mayor can tell you that I rode around yesterday and you're working yourself out of a job, Benji. I mean, there were so many places that used to be junk and trash in their yards and it looked very nice. So you're doing outstanding job. And I think peer pressure is starting to act too, so thank you for staying on this.
And we do have another one that pulled a permit yesterday on one night, sent a letter on a house and they pulled the permit to, uh, demolish... And they pulled the permit to uh demolition permit on that.
Great. Well, like I said, it it really looked good, cause I went from one side of town to the other. We didn't do our Sunday date night, so I went by myself last night. It uh, I told her, but didn't I tell you?
He came in and said, people are cleaning up, so that's good. Taking pride. Call it taking pride, so.
Any other questions, guys, on the reports? Okay, onward, administrative and elected officials reports. We begin with Mr. Williams.
If y'all recall, a few, I guess probably October of last year, the development out off of category one oh five, they were um proceeding with their phase one final plan. So that would have been this southern portion of the property. Um, so this was that five hundred home subdivision. Um, since then, they have approached staff and has been requesting to see what the council's opinion would be on approving a variance request for a portion of the property to keep platted, well, I guess at this point it would be replatted technically, to have forty foot or forty five foot lots. Um, it is very advantageous since our lot minimum width is fifty five feet. Um, but before we brought a whole uh items to y'all for meeting and discussion and have them prepare everything for that, um, we wanted to see where y'all kinda stood on that so that we could give them feedback, cause they um they don't wanna go forward with anything on engineering if it's not gonna be something that don't entertain. Um, so what they proposed kind of on this mockup is, um, I think twenty percent forty foot and then another thirty percent fifty five foot and then some sixty five foot kinda back there along the lake. Um, so.
Cause what, how many forty four?
Uh, hold on, zoom in down here. Yeah, so forty foot would be twenty eight acres, so a hundred seventy two, fifty foot, three hundred forty two, and then sixty foot would be ninety eight. So and then they, basically this request would be increasing it to six hundred and twelve lots total from the original five hundred and twenty five.
Four, on the last plat, they had fifty five, sixty five, and seventy five foot lots.
Correct.
And now they're not, now they're asking for not only the forty foot, but now they're asking for the fifty foot as well, um.
So that's two.
And sixty.
And then, well, what I'm saying, the forty and fifty is, they are less than fifty five foot.
Or less than.
And I'm sure that they're gonna ask for a seven and a half foot of, on the side set.
Ask me for five.
We have seven and a half, that's our standard.
Okay, but they're gonna ask for a five foot.
I would assume, yes.
Yeah. Just wanna point that out.
Also, that's a almost one hundred additional homes.
Correct.
And do we have infrastructure out there for the additional five hundred plus?
So they would have to make lift station improvements. That was originally part of what they were gonna do and build that force main back all the way uh up to. So.
But they would be responsible.
They would be responsible. And then that would take away the existing lift station that's behind the hospital. So there would be infrastructure improvements needed, no matter what the type of. But.
So what's the reasoning from their, change from the original?
So their reasoning was market conditions. Um, basically with interest rates and where the market's at, they are not able to really sell a larger home on a larger lot. So norm, I guess, normal sized grandparents group of homes that's put on a smaller lot is more desirable.
What size home is on a forty foot lot? Do you, did they say square foot wide?
Yeah, they would do two story. Have you seen those K B home neighborhoods where they're like squeezed in there and two stories, every house is two story? That's essentially what I would assume.
Yeah, I've seen it in Pato.
Yes, yeah. So I don't have to make that decision obviously, so just.
Well, you just wanna get some feedback on it.
And I kinda feel your feedback despite the weather, so.
I think those people want, I mean, I don't wanna touch my neighbor. Yeah, but we've we've had those arrangements asked before and uh aesthetically, I don't, let's just be personal.
That'd be, that'd be ten foot, we guarantee five. And I I bet's, if you're really thinking about, even with the push mower, that's five strikes on, and then five on the other. I mean, you can reach out the window and touch one another and that's how that's a, I know, reach out and touch someone. Uh, but that sure is.
Close.
Close, and especially when you go and you get to the bigger lots in that same subdivision. It's gonna, to me, it's, it's just me, I, a hundred and seventy two homes that are gonna be squashed together, basically what you're showing on here.
Yeah, I think, like I said, this goes, it's just too many in one one area. I know that they, there's several home builders that are involved in this project. And they were selling, supporting quite a few lots, so I'm not sure what they're, I mean, adding or anything like that to do with it. But uh, when we said that, then we just set ourselves up.
But if you had it up just a while ago, the the fifty foot lots, of that, you've got three hundred and forty two.
But that's still less than what the city requires.
Yeah, I know, fifty five, I I I know, but I'm just, I'm trying to get more than ten foot between the homes.
Well, I think in narrow head farms.
What what is, what is airhead farms?
Airhead farms is fifty five by a hundred with seven and a half foot on the side.
There'd be, there'd be some stairs for the cities.
They grant your questions from the easements.
Yeah.
Okay, you got the five. Do you have anything else, Mr. Williams?
Uh, on behalf of the zoning and building codes and flood damage prevention ordinance updates, um, at the planning workshop next Tuesday, five thirty P M at the civic center, every resident should have received their invite in the mail from the city bill last month. And uh, we've done our post on the website, social media, so um, looking forward to seeing everybody grant works and be doing the presentation. Um, I'll be there, somebody there, anybody else that uh can answer questions, um, but looking forward to it. And I hope, I believe we have a good turnout from residents so that we can make sure that the zoning code reflects what they wanna see.
Okay, so that is a information, not a presentation?
It is a presentation. It's on the drafted code amendments of what they're proposing from building codes.
But we still have input, we, that's not finalized.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, everything they're proposing is not finalized yet. This is what we've done through the comp plan work and all the discussions that we've had in workshops. So we'll be seeking public input and kind of figuring where council where y'all stand on some of those uh zoning matters, so.
Mr. White, yes.
I'll make it quick, hopefully. Big shout out to our electric department for taking care of the outage on Friday. Um, we were a couple of guys short, one back just from medical leave and our two young guys that that took care of the issue. We had a few. If you didn't see it, we had a delivery truck come through. I'm guessing we had cable hanging, not weed, but communications line hanging down. It caught that and snapped our pole, which in turn pulled our line down. So we were able to isolate that pretty quickly and get the rest of what was out on. We had the roadway and Rookshire Brothers Tobacco Barn out for about five hours while they set a pole and ran new wire, well, not new wire, but we put it back together. But uh, we wanna thank those guys for doing that. Thomas helped out, your crew helped out kinda blocking the roads and uh, team effort. It it's always nice to see when we have something like that happen, you know, they worked through lunch and worked, I mean, it was hot. If you believe it, I got I got some burns, so it was, it was hot. Uh, but having said that, we've noticed with the, and and it's, there's been comments here before with the Verizon project going on right now. We really need to take a look at our poll contacts of engaged uh element engineering, they have a college station. To, they're starting to look at all of our poll contact agreements and kinda see what we can do. They'll end up performing a audit, looking at clearances, looking at everything we need. And what we'll probably do is have them manage that process for us going forward. So anytime we have somebody new come in, there'd be an application process. Um, most of those calls will be borne by the communications folks, so hopefully it won't cost us a whole lot, but it's something we definitely need to do. We need to look at all the dead lines that we got on our poles, get that stuff off, make sure we got our clearances. And then the last thing, I will be busy until the twenty ninth, it looks like. We got a, a lot of utilities around here, got a one hundred and twenty question requests for information from the Public Utility Commission. Most of these are multi-pronged uh questions regarding the twenty twenty four derecho that really took out power in Houston and then Hurricane Pearl, I'd say. Uh, which really did not impact us that much, but it's a long drawn process. A lot of stuff to to answer and I don't feel like just a guess or no answer worked for most of that, so. I will be, Jerry and I will be working on that. We got a meeting set up for tomorrow.
Okay.
It's due by the end of the month, is the way I get it done.
Mr. Kuster?
I stopped by Cat Fleet today and talked to J W Bellinger, the operations um manager, and he was shooting for September third, but he said it'd probably be a week later, but give him another week after that. So the end of September should be all done. And uh, so that was very interesting, cause he said he would be done in September back in February, so he was right. Uh, I've already mentioned, uh, Benji, how clean Cal was looking. Thank you so much. Uh, boardwalk at the park is being redone. Thomas, do you have an update on that?
Yeah, we had our price on it. And of course, it was just a ju- just replacing the boardwalk, but as I expected, all the, all the problems and stuff, we'll ride it out. So we're gonna go back with like two and seven eighths in pipe, do it right. So Jeff is working on that.
Okay, yeah, I saw, I I go down there, it was, uh, we've already talked about recoding. The, I guess we'll be talking about some things in agenda that you and I met with uh on the next meeting per se. And uh, get something moving there. Rideaways, we've mentioned rideaways a while ago. And I noticed that Thomas, you had to go do a couple of streets, cause the grass was grown up and one of them was one that we saw that was pointed out to us. Wh- what do we, I I I think y'all are gathering all your rightaway information, is that correct? I saw that somewhere.
I was in.
Some, on like roads and 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 our rideaways.
Oh, Kayden, Kayden's been working on getting our rightaway enhancements in our G I S system.
Okay.
But that is a long, lengthy process.
Okay. But.
Every, every street is different on those rideaways. Sometimes you don't have any yard really when it comes to the rightaway.
Yeah, well, what's what's the ruling on mowing your yard? The, the, you know, most people mow to the street. But the rightaway is ten or twelve feet, whatever, I'm just using the number. If they don't, if the person that we, say Benji writes them up and tells them they gotta mow their yard. And they only mow their yard, they don't mow to the street, is that our responsibility to mow?
We run a tractor third hand. She'll tell you lots of times before she'll send a veteran, I'll make sure we'll cut our part.
Well, I noticed it today, I mean, yesterday, and I saw where y'all had done the rightaway. And that's why I'm asking, cause it was a question that was brought up. And I just, but most, I mean, you probably don't have that many and and the code keeps getting better and people are doing their yards. Maybe we won't have so much, but I just wanted to know the clarification on that.
Well, we'll usually go down the streets and our shredder's ten foot, so we'll go usually one pass and that's covered. Sometimes two, if it's more room, but that's what we try to do.
Okay, and on communication lines that you were talking about, who who's responsible for tr- trimming trees on communication lines?
It's up to them, you know, if it, I mean, the reason we trim on electric is so we reduce the number of outages that we have. We do vegetation management for that reason.
Yes.
If they don't care about it taking their stuff down, well, then it becomes an issue if it, if it's gonna take our pole down.
That that's my concern, cause there there are some where they're putting their lines through the trees and not trimming them when they're even putting the lines up. And I was just, I was worried about, that's a heck of a load, you already overloaded, we already a lot of, and if a tree falls, looks like that would take the pole.
It normally wouldn't, but I think, you know, the truck is a whole different, well, all different animal, but but normally when the trees are falling on electric lines, it'll take the line out and not the pole.
That's it for me.
Uh, Main Street had their last concert a couple of Saturdays ago. And although we were disappointed in the band, uh, the overall season was fantastic. Uh, thank you to the city crew. Uh, those guys have it down to a fine tune machine. Used to take us a couple of hours to rig down, now we're about forty five minutes up and forty five minutes down. So thank you very much to them and to the Main Street team for all of the hard work for the season. It was a, it was a great year. Um, bulky items pickup, so that starts October first?
We'll have a route put together by then.
Okay.
Right now, primarily we're allowing our our drivers to, their operators to train on that truck and really kinda clean up what what we've had out there for longer time than what we wanted to. And I can, I can tell already it's made a huge difference.
So we'll let them work things out in October, so can we do like a November promotions for?
We'll do it before then. As soon as we get everything nailed down, we'll push that out there. Uh, same for the the new residential route too, when we go to four days, we'll put signage out, we'll post on website and wherever we can put it in those places.
You you mentioned during one of our conversations, we're gonna have a man there to rake, to make sure that we're not leaving. Okay, that that was the only concern.
It'll come when we convert the sanitation over to front road.
Okay.
Which is coming. We've got about sixty something dumpsters delivered and probably ninety more to come.
Yeah, a lot of changes going. It's, the things that we've been planning are finally turning their own.
And the citizen problem reporter being utilized? Yes? Okay, awesome.
More and more or?
I would say about the same, but.
Okay. Mr. McCullar? Mr. Enrique? Okay, Mr. Gladwell? All right, we have a motion to adjourn? Okay, maybe you turn. Thank you all for coming. Okay, Katie, your turn. Thank you all for coming.